Thank you for joining us for this North Metro TV Local Decision Candidate Debate. Today, I'm glad to be joined by the candidates running for Anoka County Commissioner in District 2. Thank you both for being here. We have Mara Schilling and Julie Brassstad. Thank you both for being here. I appreciate you taking time to come in today. We're going to start our debate today with opening statements. After that, we'll go into a question and answer segment. From there, the candidates will have an opportunity to ask each other a question if they choose, and then we'll finish tonight with closing statements. Mara, you'll be up first with your opening statement.
All right. Thank you very much, Ben. I have lived in Anoka County since 1980, and I am a self-employed individual. I do two things. One is I'm a property investor, and the other is I'm a real estate broker. Being a property investor, I'm dealing with budget, working with my clients, which are my tenants. And so, budget and working with tenants is kind of a tricky thing sometimes, but you learn real fast on where to spend your money, how to spend it properly, and get your best effect done to make sure that your tenants have a good place to live and keep up with the property. As far as being a real estate broker, one of the things that that has done for me is the art of negotiation, and I really feel that these two aspects of my life will help me out as a commissioner.
Thank you for your opening statement. Julie, you're next with your opening statement.
Thank you, Ben. My name is Julie Brassstad. I'm currently the county commissioner for District 2. I'm in my first term, so this is my fourth year serving as county commissioner. Prior to being elected as county commissioner, I served for six years on the Ham Lake City Council. Two years before that, I served as a planning and zoning commissioner. I really feel that serving at the city level prepared me well to serve on the county board. I currently chair both the Public Safety Committee for the county, as well as the Intergovernmental and Community Relations Committee.
Thank you. We're going to go now into a question and answer segment. Julie, you'll be first with the first question today, talking about the county budget. How do you prioritize when it comes to the county budget? If you had to cut, where would you look first? If there was additional dollars coming in, where would you want to direct those funds to first? How will you prioritize?
You know, the budget is probably the biggest thing overall that we do. Our current county board has been very committed to balancing the needs and the wants of the board, as well as the citizens. We have been able to reduce our budget over a few years, and actually, the current levy is at the same level that it was back in 2010. So, we make sure that we're making respectful decisions while we're still able to continue providing the services. While making cuts, we have been able to not have to, while making cuts in the budget, we've been able to not cut services. We've been able to even add employees. So, we're really providing services efficiently and effectively, and I think our budget philosophy has served our citizens well, especially during some really tough economic times. They were able to see decreases or pretty much flat county property taxes, and we were really proud of the work that we've been able to do with that.
Thank you for your answer. Mara, same question to you now. How would you prioritize when it comes to the county budget? If you had to cut, where would you look first? If there are additional dollars coming in, where would you want to direct those to first?
Well, to start with, being that I have not been in this position up until, hopefully, in January, the first priority that I have is to get to know all of the heads of the various departments, because that's really where my springboard is going to be. Learning their wants and needs, looking at the past history of the various departments on where they have spent the money, and how they look at what is important to them. Because with that knowledge, I'll be able to make proper decisions along with the other board members. This position is obviously not about me. It's more about the people that I'm working with. So, learning their needs and wants is critical for me.
Thank you for your answer. After every question, I'm going to offer 15 seconds rebuttal time or response time to both of you. It's your choice if you choose to use it. Would anyone like it after this question? Okay, we'll move on to the next question then. Mara, you'll be first on this question. What do you think is the most important part of being a county commissioner?
Working, like I said in the last question, working with the various departments is probably the first thing of priority as far as I'm concerned. Second most important is listening to the community members, keeping dialogue open with anyone who calls in or sends an email with concerns, making sure that those are addressed and answered properly.
Thank you for your answer. Julie, same question to you now. What do you think is the most important part of being a county commissioner?
I think the most important part is being approachable, so that people, staff, citizens, colleagues want to sit down and talk to you when they have a concern. Being a good listener is extremely important. People will call when they're frustrated and feel like no one is listening. Sometimes they feel government is stacked against them, and it's really understanding where they're coming from, where the roadblocks that they might be facing are, and then working together collaboratively to find, you know, resolutions to those issues. And our, you know, we have the best staff around, and they come up with some great ideas, great ideas all the time. They really know their departments and know their jobs, so it isn't us sitting behind the desk saying, you know, "Hey, we know how to operate your department better." They're the ones that come up with the great ideas. So, we just are the ones to be open-minded, willing to invest in innovation and different other assets to help them do their job better.
Thank you. Rebuttal time, anyone? All right. Well, we'll keep moving on then. Next question, Julie, you'll be first on this question, talking about an aspect of public safety. "It's clear both nationally and locally that there is high tension between segments of the law enforcement community and minority communities. How will you work to create an environment in Anoka County to address these issues?"
Well, with public safety, and that happens to be one of the committees I chair, I think having a good working relationship with our sheriff and our chief deputy and their staff. Our sheriff really runs his own department. We don't have a say-so of what he does, but what we do is we work collaboratively with him on basic issues like, you know, understanding what each other's do, what roles we each have, you know, embracing diversity. Our county is very diverse. What happens and what the atmosphere looks like down in Columbia Heights is way different than what it looks like up and now then. So, I think our sheriff does a great job, and we're there to support him, give him what he needs as far as finances. And I think that just having commissioners that are out in the community very actively, in many different organizations, you know, we attend a lot of events and show that we're there for everyone. We represent every culture, ethnic background, and we're there for all the people of Anoka County.
Thank you for your answer. Mara, same question to you now. "It's clear both nationally and locally that there is high tension between segments of the law enforcement community and minority communities. How will you work to create an environment in Anoka County to address these issues?"
Well, I have to concur with Julie. Working with the sheriff and his staff is extremely important. Getting to know the various outings that the sheriff does, and you can see these on the internet if you follow the sheriff's Facebook page, for one thing. They get out into the community and are involved with the community, and I think that is very key into creating an atmosphere where the general population trusts and feels comfortable with the sheriff. And so, one of my goals, and I've already met with the sheriff once, is to meet with him as often as I possibly can, not taking up his time, obviously, because he's got a very busy and important position, but to meet with him and understand what he's up against and help him out in whatever way I can.
Thank you. Rebuttal time, anyone? All right. We'll move on. We're going to continue talking about public safety, though. Mara, you'll be first on this question. Do you support body cameras for all law enforcement officers in Anoka County that would be active all the time?
I personally think that's a really good idea. Anytime you're in a situation where it's questionable as to, you know, what happened or how things happened, if it is documented, there is no question anymore, and it helps out both sides, whether it's the police officer or the citizen. It's very telling what happened and why.
Thank you for your answer. Julie, same question to you. Do you support body cameras for all law enforcement officers in Anoka County that would be active at all times?
You know, we are looking at and working with the sheriff on when to roll this out. It's something that is in the works. There are some issues that we're trying to, you know, get the right answers to, like who owns the data, how long do you have to keep the data, when is it made public. So, with body cameras being fairly new into law enforcement, and especially in Minnesota, there's a lot of things we want to know first. We're in the information gathering phase, but it is something that we have spoken with the sheriff about, and he does want to move forward with. It's just all in the timing. So, I think that's a really good thing.
Thank you. Rebuttal time, anyone? All right. I may keep asking. Let's talk about roads a little bit, but specifically, I want to talk about Highway 65. It goes right through your district. I mean, it goes down into District 3, down into, you know, District 4. You know, it's going right through the heart of our area here, but it's not on MINDOT's radar at all. So, Julie, you'll be first on this question. How would you like to see congestion along Highway 65 addressed in these next few years?
Well, it's not exactly true that it's not on MINDOT's radar. We have revitalized just recently the North Trunk Highway 65 Corridor Coalition, which includes the cities from Blaine up to Mora, the three counties of Anoka, Santee, and Canobec. And so, we have been meeting regularly for well over the last year, and we try to get a MINDOT rep at every single one of our meetings. So, they know what the city officials, what the county officials, what our county engineer has questions with and concerns with. So, we are moving forward. The MINDOT has come up with a plan to reduce some of the conflict intersections. Right now, mostly, they're concentrating on a few up in East Bethel that they're actually hoping in the next year and a half to get working on. There's going to be a new study that's coming out towards the end of the year that sounds like it's going to shed light on how dangerous Highway 65 is in comparison to some of the other roads around the metro area. And my gut feeling is that it's going to rate very highly up there.
Thank you. Mara, same question to you. How would you like to see congestion along Highway 65 addressed in the next few years?
Well, I think it's fantastic that MINDOT is addressing this and addressing it now. One of the things is, you know, the population growth is not going to be stagnant. It is going to continue to grow. There are going to be more and more people living in northern Anoka County and using 65 to get to work. And another aspect of it is, I would like to see, and I'm pretty sure that everyone else on the commission board would like to see, is a greater growth of the business world in Anoka County, especially along Highway 65. In order to achieve that, improving Highway 65 is imperative. So, I'm all for improving 65 and would thoroughly enjoy working on a project like that and helping people achieve that.
Thank you. Does anyone want any extra time after that question?
I would just like to add that, much like what's happened over on Highway 10, the county has worked collaboratively over there with the cities on the county and at the federal level, and has taken the lead, and we're also doing that on Highway 65, even though it's not our road necessarily. I think it's important to note.
Thank you. Did you need any extra time, Mara?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. I want to talk about the amenities that the county offers, a little bit different than the services the county offers. When we think of amenities, we think of things like parks, trails, libraries, things that the county provides to its citizens. Mara, you'll be first on this question. Do you think everyone is being served by these amenities? Are there more amenities of this nature that you want to provide for your residents, and are they worth the costs that they take to maintain and provide them?
Well, one of the things that I really enjoy, and I enjoy watching other people enjoy, is the trail system. Excuse me. And expanding on that, I think, is a really good idea. Interconnecting the various parks as much as we can, so that people can get out and enjoy the outside world, the nature aspect of our beautiful county. And so, that is one area that I'm interested in.
Thank you. Julie, thinking about amenities that the county provides to its residents, do you think everyone's being served by the amenities that are there now? Are there more amenities that you'd like to see the county start providing its residents, and are they worth the cost that it takes to provide them?
I think we offer a good variety of amenities to pretty much everyone, from the southern end of the county to the northern end. It's nice to be able to have parks and trails, and we've got this highly rated water park, you know, Bunker Beach is a wonderful asset to have. We are just coming off our second most attended season ever with the Bunker Beach. And what that allows is perhaps families that can't get away and take vacations or don't have a cabin to go to, you know, it allows them to, you know, pay a few dollars and have a wonderful day, a great family event. And we know getting people outside, biking and walking and rollerblading and staying active is good for them. So, anything that we can do to encourage them to utilize our trails, our system, I think, is wonderful. Would it be nice to have, you know, more everyone everywhere? Yes, but it's not exactly practical either. So, I think making wise decisions, making sure the trails connect and go somewhere is important, and putting them where they're going to be the most utilized, I think, is just being fiscally responsible.
Thank you. Extra time, anyone? Rebuttal time? All right. I want to talk next about transit. Now, I know there's the bus line that is going through East Bethel and Blaine, making several stops along down the way going to Minneapolis. North Star runs through a part of Anoka County, but are there any other transit projects that you would want to bring to Anoka County or expand in Anoka County currently? Julie, you're first with this question.
I definitely would not want to expand on North Star. That's proving to be somewhat challenging, and the subsidy keeps riding, rising, while the ridership keeps dropping. I think good, constructive, usable ideas like that express bus that you referred to, which starts up in East Bethel, people can park there for free, they're picked up in East Bethel, there's a stop in Ham Lake, one stop in Blaine, and then boom, it goes right downtown. That has been, that's a three-year trial period. I think we're just met the two-year mark right now. That has been popular, hasn't been as popular as I think the county and metro transit thought it would be. So, we're looking at that, how to perhaps make it more popular. I think buses can, are the way to go, as opposed to trying to expand on our train system. They're flexible. You know, you don't have to sit and wait when you're on a road. But I think we always have to be looking at different ways to get people to move around Anoka County. The majority of our population likes to be in their vehicles and have the freedom and the flexibility and the convenience of that, but we need to continue looking at that.
Thank you for your answer. Mara, same question to you now. What, if any, transit projects would you want to bring to Anoka County or expand in Anoka County?
One of the things about transit, or the ability to get to work, or whatever function it is that you want to attend, it is continually growing, and it happens because the population grows. Every aspect of transit needs to be paid attention to, whether it's buses, or car traffic, or transportation of goods, the semis, transportation of goods with trains, the transportation of people with trains. It all has to constantly be tweaked. The North Star, for example, is it a good system? Yes. Can it be improved on? Of course it can, just like the roads themselves and cars. Again, going back to Highway 65, improving on Highway 65 so that the cars move along faster. That's an improvement. And so, is there any one particular mode of transportation that I find to be the best? Absolutely not. They're all pretty equal in the sense that you have to pay attention. Are they achieving what they're supposed to be doing, and if not, what do we need to do to tweak them?
Thank you. Rebuttal time, anyone? All right. Just a couple more questions from me. Let's see. Mara, you'll be first on this question. Sitting on the Anoka County Board, you represent the whole county, but you specifically will represent District 2, whoever's sitting there. What is something that you would like to accomplish specifically for your district?
For District 2? A concentration on Highway 65, definitely. That, as well as improving on the business aspect in the area of bringing more businesses in. I would like to see larger companies coming in that hire a lot of people, so that people that live in northern Anoka County don't necessarily have to travel all the way down Highway 65 into the lower section of 65 to their employment, where they could, in fact, get a job closer to home, spend less time on the road, on the road, and more time at home.
Thank you. Same question to you, Julie. What is something you would like to accomplish specifically for your district?
Well, right now, my priority would be Highway 65, working with MINDOT and seeing that we've got their attention to some of the issues. I think we just need to continue that conversation and keep working on that, because that is such a main thoroughfare. And it's frustrating while it is not a road that the county maintains or necessarily takes care of, but we generally are the ones that the residents will contact about it. And usually, it's where the Highway 65 does intersect the county roads. You know, there's a lot of intersections that have high accidents. We've had one in Ham Lake that had multiple fatalities, and when I was on the Ham Lake City Council, we worked with MINDOT and got the first J-turn put in there, and that has been a lifesaver. The accidents that, if they occur now, they're not the serious fatalities that we've once seen. So, I think that is absolutely, you know, roads are something everyone travels on. If it's, you know, to and from work, to and from school, products moving up and down the roads, it has to be a priority, and we face that, those issues every single day.
Thank you. Extra time, anyone on that? All right. Last question from me, question that, the only question we're asking in every single debate that we do this fall. All 17 of them will hear this question. "Across America, we're seeing deep divisions between races, ages, religions, socioeconomic classes, and political parties. How will you work to foster a spirit of unity, both at the county government and also right back in your own community?" Julie, you're first on this question.
Well, I think that goes back to being the good listener and willing to sit down and understand other people's ways of life, their beliefs. And we don't all have to believe in the same thing, and we can live in a peaceful, peaceful community. I think we just need to try to understand better where we're each coming from, and, you know, try to help the people that need help. We do have vulnerable areas and populations. If it's the mentally ill, disabled people, the seniors, we have people in really every area that are struggling. And I think so many come to the county for helping, you know, that their needs be met. And I think just being approachable and being out there, I think that is one of the things that I've done best, is I'm very active in my district, go to as many events as I can, and try to help out the nonprofits that kind of are aligned with my thinking and want to address some of the major needs, like the Lee Carlson Center. And we have so much mental illness that is affecting other parts of what the county does.
Thank you for your answer. Mara, same question to you now. How will you work to foster a spirit of unity, both in the county government and in your own community?
Well, to start out with, when I was, a little background of myself here, when I was a youth, I was a foreign exchange student to Brazil, South America. One of the things I learned on that year was that people are people all over the world. We really all have the same wants and needs. We approach them differently. We have different traditions, different festivals, different ways of doing it, but we're all basically the same. And when it comes to having issues in a country as diverse as ours, or even just in our county, the best thing to do, and this is something that I've always done ever since my experience, is when I find someone who is approaching life just a little bit differently than myself, I want to get to know them, get to know how they're doing it and why they're doing it. And ultimately, every single time I do it, I recognize that they're the same as I am. We have no real differences. And so, showing respect to others and allowing them to express their traditions the way they want to is the best thing to do, and, you know, just enjoy life with them and don't be controversial about it.
Thank you for your answer. Anyone need rebuttal time? Okay. Well, now we come to the part of the debate where, if you choose, you have the opportunity to ask a question to your opponent. Mara, you have the first opportunity to ask a question to Julie.
Actually, I am not going to ask a question to Julie. I do have to make a statement, if I can. This is--
You can use your closing statement time if you would like for that, but this is the time where you can ask a question.
I'm good. Very good.
All right. Julie, you have an opportunity, if you choose, to ask a question to Mara.
Yes, I would just like to know, Mara, if with continued talk about expanding the North Star train from Big Lake to St. Cloud, and if that came to a vote to the county board, is that something you think that you would support, and if so, why, and if not, why?
I guess, in order for me to vote yes or no on that, one of the things that I would want to see is better scheduling of how the North Star is run today. I think it is achievable, but not the way the schedule is set up currently. And I understand that that is a situation of working with Burlington Northern and the freight trains and trying to get track time, basically. If that can get improved upon, I believe ridership would go up, and it would definitely help with transportation between St. Cloud and Minneapolis. But until that time, no, it can't be accomplished.
Thank you.
Did you have any responses that you wanted to add? You do have 15 seconds.
No, I was just curious.
All right. Well, we're going to move in now to our closing statements. You will each have one minute for your closing statement. Mara, you will be first with your closing statement.
Okay, thank you. Well, as I was going to say, in all fairness to Julie and myself, this is actually the second time we've ever really met. And I, in listening to Julie and watching her, you know, on the board, I'm finding that she and I are very similar in very many ways. And I actually wish that we had more time to sit down and discuss issues, because I think that-- think that, you know, unfortunately, we're running against each other in this district. But I think if we were in two separate districts and we were both on the board, we'd probably make a pretty good team working together.
Thank you. Julie, your opportunity now for your closing statement.
Thank you. Then Anoka County's mission statement is to serve citizens in a respectful, innovative, and fiscally responsible manner. Every decision I make is based on fulfilling that mission statement. As the only candidate in my race with experience at setting policy at both the city and county level, I really understand what the residents and what the businesses need. I'm very much in touch with them. Having lower taxes, a good infrastructure, and an approachable and involved county board makes Anoka County a very attractive place to live, work, and play. My core values include personal integrity, fiscal responsibility, and dedication to my community. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve the residents of Anoka County and District 2. I humbly ask for your support on November 8th. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks to both of you for coming in today and sharing your views and opinions with us and with the viewers. I do appreciate your time today. I want to remind you that you can always head to northmetrotv.com for complete local decision coverage. It's all there for you. On the homepage, you'll see a local decision tab. You can click on that, find biographies from candidates all across the county, as well as more debates just like this one. They're all linked there for you on northmetrotv.com. We'll continue to follow all those races right up to Election Day, and then here on North Metro TV, we'll have complete local decision coverage on election night. Hours of coverage, it'll be your own in-depth analysis. It's the only place you'll find it for your local races. This has been a debate for Anoka County Commissioner in District 2. The candidates, Maris Schilling, Julie Brastad. Thank you both for being here, and I want to thank you all for watching.